Regular meeting of the. I'll call the October 3 meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight, especially on such a fantastic evening. So hard to get in the car and come to a meeting. Tonight's agenda is to accept some minutes from prior meetings to go over the draft of the town plan, which we are calling version three of the town plan, which David and team have prepared for us. We will listen to public comment, both at the beginning of the meeting and after we discuss the town plan. And then we will consider a motion to approve the plan to forward to the Select Board. And then we'll have some a report from Linda and also from other Planning Commission need Planning Commission members. Then wrap up and set up for our next meeting. Does anybody need to make any changes to the agenda? Okay. The next item is public comment. Did anybody like to make public comment? Chuck, if you would come forward to the microphone, introduce yourself and share your comment in just a couple of minutes, please.
My name is Chuck, please. So you live in Jersey or Southern. I my comments had to do with kind of the transition from the Plan Commission to Select Board. I'm hoping that you have dates from now. And one of the major recommendations from the Housing Committee was that at least on the things that we talked about, that the Select Board commit to dates and have it. And I'm hoping that either that they have committed or that you insist that they commit to them as part of this kind of handoff and process. The second thing is, it's been, you know, remarkable. I mean, it's been interesting, I'd say, over the last couple of years, how often I've brought up something in the plan, the zoning, and the Select Board members either don't didn't know it was there or don't agree with it, or just really didn't have a handle on sort of major issues. When I say stuff like, you know, it's illegal to make, it's prohibited to make birdhouses with hand tools of half of the form-based code area. Like, they don't know that. Or I think, or sometimes it'll surprise at how constrained multifamily housing is. And when I think about how they review the budget, you know, they go down every line item of the budget. And this plan is actually more important than the budget, in my view. And I hope that you insist that they go through it that way. Historically, what happens is the Planning Commission gives them, you know, a plan or zoning. And maybe they read it, maybe they don't. They have a couple of hearings. They thank the Planning Commission for all their hard work. And they'll say, well, this is just, this is a start, headed in the right direction. And to me, it they don't own the plan at that point. It's like, basically, you're kind of like the controller, and you've prepared a budget for them to review. And I think you need to insist that they review it that way and that there is some discussion among the three of them, because that never happens. If you think about it, the three of them will sit, they'll hear some public comment, and then they'll, what do you, what do you think? What do you think? And they haven't gone through like major stuff, like the future of natural resources in Jericho. This is like heavy, weighty stuff. And you have been chartered and have spent an extraordinary amount of time on it. And some of the subsidiary committees, the Housing Committee, other committees, a lot of people, a lot of volunteers have worked really hard on this. And the Select Board needs to really understand it line by line, and they need to accept it as their own. And this is where we miss, is right now. You can sort of, I guess, we wouldn't have gotten where we are now at absolute deadline. But, you know, they're really going to have to spend some time. It is during the budget season, and maybe they need to come in and spend a couple Saturdays going through it with members of the Planning Commission. But, you know, it's, it won't work unless it becomes their plan.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other comment, public comments? No. The next item is to wish Sarah MacLeod happy birthday.
Oh, thank you very much.
Happy birthday. Okay, not on the, not on the agenda.
Away soccer games on Tuesdays.
Thank you for being here on your very special, personal day.
There's no one else I'd rather.
Oh, come on. Hopefully, your kids aren't too sad. Okay. Okay, the next item is to approve the minutes of September 19. So I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Sarah, thank you. A second.
Second.
Chris, thank you. Any corrections or clarifications on the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. Then we will also do the same for approving the minutes of September 26. A motion to approve.
I'm so moved.
Sarah, second.
Second.
Wendy, I'm writing furiously because Nancy's not here. Any, any clarifications or corrections on the minutes?
I've either minor edit. It said I was on Zoom last time, but I wasn't. So I just deleted the word Zoom.
Okay.
And it's
Okay, yes, that's fine.
I'm not, but I did.
No, that's fine.
I'm saying it now.
Changed it when you put it on.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, any, all those in favor of approving the minutes of September 26, say aye.
Aye.
Well, anyone opposed?
No.
I need to stand since.
Okay. Okay.
Do you need help with notes if you're facilitating?
I think I'm okay. We, 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 I think we have a a pretty straightforward note-taking situation. But thank you. Okay, so the next topic is to discuss the town plan for the 2700th time. And David, multiple of three, that's true. Okay, so Sabina, why don't you point out what you pointed out?
I happen to notice that it's the third of October of 2023. I had version three of the plan, so we were speculating about the three magic that was in there.
So we're feeling like this is good karma, because we looked up about the number three and a triangle is the strongest geometric shape. And there are many, many significant things related to number three. Yes, okay, so this is version three. Many thanks to everyone who worked very hard, especially David, to you. Thank you very much. Your patience waiting through literally hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of edits and modifications. So thank you very much. The way we wanted to conduct this session section is just to highlight the primary changes in volume one and the primary changes in volume two at a very high level. And answer any questions that anybody has. And then also review the timeline of what happens next, especially given what we just heard from Chuck. That's what we're going to do, right?
Yep.
Okay. So in order to do that, maybe Sabina, can you display our summary? So I'm going to talk about the highlights of changes from volume one, and Linda's going to talk about the highlights of changes from volume two. So this is, actually, it says edits highlights since version, oh, right, since version two. But this is actually version three. Okay. Version two is what was published prior to the public hearing. And version three is what we've been working on in parallel ever since. And version three, we just received in the last day or so, and it's just also now being posted to the website. And version three is what we would forward to the Select Board. Okay, so the first notes are just kind of some general highlights of changes. Basically, the document, as you've all hopefully noticed, is shorter. The text has been streamlined and a lot of some of the redundancy of saying the same thing, but different ways has been eliminated. As Chris had pointed out, we had many, many different groups and of priorities. So that was reorganized into goals, priorities, objectives, and strategies. So there's only one list of priorities in volume one. The text is still pretty conversational, still trying to be accessible and user-friendly. But it is, as Eric had requested, a little bit more formal, and it's in a little bit more of a passive voice as opposed to quite so personal. We looked for jargon and tried to make, tried to eliminate planning jargon or just even things that planners, even us as more well-versed volunteers, understand with more layman's terms. The area around town capacity, so expanding town capacity was an item cited in each chapter, but it wasn't really that specific. And so now you see in volume one that each chapter, when it mentions town capacity, it talks about what are the skills necessary to accomplish the objectives and strategies of this particular chapter. So housing talks about real estate development, whereas connect, connected community talks more about public work specifications, infrastructure management, things like that. But it is all grouped together later on. And also, there was a pass through volume one with more of an equity lens, which, for example, we, the term family, family, and we remember we did this in the zoning. We eliminated the term family, replaced it with household. And our kids, just by using our and us while making it personal is also can be othering. And so we tried to eliminate that. And also, we heard from Susan when she was talking about making sure that things were accessible, especially around housing, that affordability is part of accessibility. And something can be financially accessible. It can be socially accessible. It can be physically accessible. So we looked for opportunities to talk about accessibility. So those are, that's general all through volume one. And then I just have a couple of highlights from each of the chapters. So the intro now acknowledges the shortcomings and some of the consequences of past town plans that we talked about at our last meeting. And we just received a statement from the Committee on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion that the plan still uses the term rural character. But we couldn't get rid of it completely because rural character is actually used in state statute and means things in the planning world. And so they've drafted a statement that will be added that basically acknowledges that it has in, in the past and even today can be exclusionary, and that's not our goal, but we couldn't eliminate it entirely. Vision Goals and Priorities is now basically a summary of the entire plan in three pages.
Hooray.
Each, the vision is one page, goals is one page, and priorities is one page. Okay, then, for the next set of the, the primary chapters, resilient increases emphasis on water and stormwater, and landscape values are linked to, or the rural landscape is linked to specific values a little bit more precisely. Housing includes an emphasis on clustered housing, but it is not, it doesn't only talk about housing in the villages. It talks about housing throughout the town with the caveats of natural resources protection, clustered housing is preferred, where connectivity can be provided. So it's not like a free-for-all, you know, just build a house wherever, no matter what, without consideration, but it's also more balanced. It's not only in the village, because it's not really realistic. There's more conversation about taking advantage of the existing buildings. There were comments about how the previous version seemed to be wanting to hide the fact that we want, that we are building multi-unit buildings and wanting to make things look like not what they really are. And so the language now really talked, but we also heard a lot of concerns about scale and wanting things to be appropriately scaled for Jericho. So the language tries to set, talk about village scale rather, as the goal, rather than looking like a single household building. And we did add something in that homeowners association should not be able to undermine the regulations. Vibrant Community is about the local economy and the schools. So there's a little more emphasis on schools as community hubs. And there is more mention, these things were all there. They're not like new and different. As I'm going through, it's just more the language was crystallized or tightened up, I would say. And so there's more discussion about childcare, healthcare, and recreation, especially indoor recreation and accessible recreation. The Connected chapter talks about prioritizing safety over speed and safety by design, which is a planning principle. And we also included more references to the tri-town study and a reference on micro-transit and a little bit more detail on the climate action plan, like what is a climate action plan before it just said we were going to have one? Now, there's a couple of sentences that say what that would be. And then on effective community, there's more on the rationale, why, what would be so great about a larger Select Board? What would be so great about a transition to a town manager? And there's also now kind of like two sides of the coin. It's not just do more stuff and do it better, but it's also get more stuff done faster. And then in the future land use chapter, there is now like a specific definition of this concept of a village growth area, which was sort of amorphous before and mentioned, but, but we used lots of different terminology to refer to the same thing. Now it says village growth area, this is what it means. And then that term village growth area is, is populated back through the document, the prior chapters. Now every time, so instead of saying village cent, I mean, it says village centers, but instead of saying like community centers or growth centers or different urban terms, it now pretty much always says village growth area. And there's a little bit more rationale. This came as a, as a requirement from CCRPC, who required us to provide more detail on why we would want to expand growth into the area near the high school? What are the, what are the elements and characteristics of that geographic area that make it well-suited as a new growth area? So there's a little bit more about that. And then finally, the Getting It Done chapter, really, David pretty much recorded our meeting from on 9/26. So there's the clarified list of actions. He added a step, it's actually the very first step, that the PC would review the plan regularly and submit an annual report, the one lead that we discussed per action, and then the one action that was really new. It was in the chapter, but it wasn't in the Getting It Done, was a micro, excuse me, micro-transit pilot. So that is not obviously all of the changes for volume one, because there are literally hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of changes. But many of them are changing a verb tense from an ing verb to an action verb, like stuff like that. Those are, I think, the most salient. So before I pass it to Linda, does anybody have any comments or questions about that?
I have a question about the schools as community hub. Is that aspirational? Or does that actually pop in right now? Or where, where, where is that? Where's the reality on the ground about that?
I think it's a pretty accurate description. I mean, having, having had kids and having still one kid in high school now, it's a, it's certainly, there's a lot that goes on at the schools that draws in community members. Is that what you mean?
Well, I guess, I see what you're saying makes sense to me, but I'm thinking of it more as a, for people who don't have kids in the schools. Where do they fit it? And is it, is that the intention of the, of the description? Or is it, is it that they are their own community for the time when you have kids in the schools and then you move off?
Yeah. It's a good point, because we definitely want to not group people and exclude people. How, but it is true that, I agree with Chris, that the schools is a big part of the social network for the parents and the kids. So it's recognizing that's true. The chapter actually does also talk about how the school facilities can serve the community. It does talk about that a little bit.
I do think a fair amount of that is happening. I mean, like, there's MMU after dark. I don't know how many people are aware of that, but they're, they're very.
I don't think that's.
Thought it did.
I haven't seen that, but doesn't, doesn't mean it exists.
So, yes.
I know, like, the, like, the local dance studio does performances at the high school. Like, you can rent the high school space, and voting happens at the high school, and town meeting happens at the high school. And the schools play a role in like our disaster recovery plans. The high school, I think, would, or this would function as a shelter, because they have generators, they, they're great locations for solar. So it's more than just kids in the, if you, for families with kids in school.
So many of the parades start and end at the middle school. And so many sports happen at the middle school and not just kids' sports, like other.
Got it.
Things.
Okay. I guess I need to get out more.
No.
Yeah, on town hall.
But I think that's an important point. And, and I'll be honest, a lot of the reason that indoor recreation comes up on here so often is because we are completely over capacity. If you want an indoor gym space any night of the week, you cannot find it in this town. If you want to have, the, the only other indoor space where you can like have a rowdy birthday party is the community center. And it's really limited on size and parking. And that's a real need. Other people want to do other events. Other people want to have like an adult volleyball league, and it just cannot happen in this town, because there's no space for it. Because every, every open space is taken up by some other awesome activity. And we share, even like the, the school age kids, we share between districts. Like, we combine teams, and so you'll have a basketball team that practices at night, and they'll practice one night here and one night at Camel's Hump. And they'll take turns just to fit everybody in. So, yeah, I, that's, like I said, that's one reason why it keeps coming up, is because there's such a need. And if we had a little more space and more flexibility, there, there could be more other non-school activities happening in those spaces.
All right, well, thank you.
I have one comment or question. And I apologize, because I wasn't here for the last time for the conversation about having one lead for action, which I totally support and love. So it's clear. I'm just wondering, given Chuck's comment here, is it clear that, like, so much of it is, is actually, when I was looking at it, it's like, oh, boy, we're going to be super busy as a planning commission, right? Like, we have a lot of work to do in the next one to three years. And there was a part where I thought, huh. Like, the only downside of doing one is it doesn't necessarily capture who we have to consult with and who actually gets the, gets to make the decision and how they need to be involved.
So the discussion, we had, we did, we did discuss all of that and decided that what we would focus on in the list was who has the ball? Who is responsible for just moving it to the very next step? And so obviously, like, we're not responsible necessarily for deciding anything specific around like the wastewater, village wastewater. But we are, we, we are responsible for reviewing the report and providing a comment or a recommendation to the Select Board before then they would take their next steps. So we were very precise in thinking about it and saying, like, all of the, all of the items would basically be collaborative and would require lots of consultation with lots of committees. But what we were really striving for was accountability for the very next step.
Yep. That totally makes sense to me. Thank you very much for explaining that. Yeah, yeah, I just really want it to be clear that we're not making a disconnect between why we need more government capacity, which I brilliant, love the weaving it into each of the chapters. I read that it worked really beautifully with the distinct skills and resources that were needed, that it doesn't, because other than the planner, I don't think anybody else shows up, right?
No town administration.
Town administration.
Okay, all right, good.
Do you think it gives more context, more explanation of what that column means?
I just, or, or just, I, I remember Wendy, what the preamble is to what the, what it is, but I just sort of just acknowledging that this is a huge amount of responsibility and requires a functional town government to implement it, right?
Yeah, so maybe.
So I just don't know, like, how that goes.
Maybe we should clarify that exact, that what the lead means.
Yeah.
And it doesn't mean the decision maker, per se. It doesn't mean you're doing it all on your own Lone Ranger style. It just means in order to make progress, who, who is the current owner of that item? And so that might change over time. So if we do this quarterly review and an annual report, we should have the ability to update that chart with, like, we're done with it. So now it's up to the next person's hands. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah, and I just think.
That's a good point.
It would just be helpful, you know, just again, if one of the core recommendations we have is that we need more staff capacity and greater diversity in our Select Board, that doesn't shine through, given that we, it looks like, oh, we've handed out all these great volunteer groups, and they're just going to make it happen. Right? So it's just, it's, and it could be more perception than anything, but I just, that's what struck me. And then I don't want to undermine our strong recommendation to increase capacity. So I offer that up, and it may just serve as a comment without doing an action change. I just wanted to share that with, with all of you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on volume one?
Yes, I wonder if we want to more overtly mention the restrictions that Act 250 has placed on past development.
And density.
Density. We're talking about clustered housing.
Yeah.
And we've already, MMU is a prime example of a place that would have been, had more housing if it were not for Act 250.
Yep.
And that will just continue. And, you know, that, it should be made clear to whoever else is listening in the state that that's a real thing. And in this moment of housing crisis, that's going to be a rate-limiting factor, big time. Especially in a community that has land to do clustered housing in greater density. But no one will do it while Act 250 exists.
Is that sort of in that beginning chapter where we're talking about the two issues, the two major issues that are facing Jericho? Because it's not something that we as a town can act on, but it's something that you want to, we think is important to talk about as a constraint or something that is.
Yeah, because.
A causal factor.
Because the intro chapter talks about housing and climate change as the two primaries. So that might be the right place for it.
I just had some, where are you, where are you done?
I'm done.
I just had some comments on the Connected Community chapter, just because the DEI committee, I thought, suggested some really more thoughtful ways to describe transportation and mobility, you know, using that equity lens. And I think they got it in, in time for that September 19 last call. But I would, I would really like to see that included to the version that goes to the Select Board. So I think the more that we can model appropriate language or for them to see that we are trying to use a greater equity lens in the plan, the more it makes the declaration of inclusion more of a living statement rather than just a passive one. So those were, they suggested for on page 75, that framing it as transportation is about mobility, having this, having streets that regardless of transportation mode are accessible, safe, and are appropriate for the needs of all users, particularly the most vulnerable. And then, again, talking about ensuring streets are accessible for the most vulnerable. talking about ensuring streets are accessible for the most vulnerable by the way of tactile walking tactile walking indicators, accessible pedestrian signs, push button accessible to wheelchair users, and efficient amount of curb cups and ramps.
I mean, was that in volume one or volume two?
Volume one, um, on page seventy five. Oh, well, I guess that was volume one, version two.
Yeah.
Version two, so I don't know.
Connectivity chapter, though?
Yeah, or yeah.
And that was text in like the spreadsheet?
Yes, they they included that in their spreadsheet. And where do you want to have edits of things like, you know, text that's repeated twice or, you know, just that level of stuff? Like, where does that go?
You'll see when we actually, and even based on the comment that you just made about the um, about connectivity. At the end, we have, we we have a list because we already have a list of corrections, like there's still some typos. There's still some grammar issues. There's still what I had called in my own mind orphan edits. Similar to what you just pointed out, edits that I thought were in the document when we were looking at it with David, but then are not in the document now that it had gone to Liz. So I don't know how that, some of the stuff we couldn't, we didn't have access to edit. So there is a list of stuff. Um, so we'll, I guess, discuss that at the end. Okay, any other comments on volume one? Volume two.
All right.
You're up.
Great, um, so I did the bulk of the editing on volume two using um, comments from the Affordable Housing Committee, the DEI Committee. Um, the plan, the planning commissioners that sent stuff, I ended up forwarding that to David because I ran out of time and he needed to do the editing with that while I was at conference last week. Uh, but then I also did some edits from several residents and committee members, so I'll talk through the components that um, that I know about that I did. Um, and so most of the things that were in the feedback did get included. Um, there were some things that maybe didn't get captured in in the cases where that didn't happen would be um, where there were changes requested to charts or graphs. Cause that was gonna require pulling more data from different places. We didn't necessarily have the time or know where to get some of the data that people were hoping to see or wanting um, displayed. And some edits where specific language data or suggestions weren't provided, again, had the same scenario. It was like, oh, well, I'm not sure where to get this language or how to say it in the way that they would hope. Um, and so in those, some of those cases, we weren't able to incorporate that feedback. Um, and then lost in translation is sort of how I'm trying to capture both like comments that I either was like, huh, I'm not quite sure that I get it. And also um, the relaying info, which is like info coming from a committee to me and then getting edited by me and then I uploaded it to the Google Drive and then David pulled it out of the Google Drive and then he edited it and turned it into a PDF. It does seem like in those translations between different formats, there were some bits and pieces that somehow didn't make the cut. So that, there are some, I think, unintentional losses, like you referred to Susan in volume one, where like, oh, we thought this was here and we did see it there, but something happened. Um, and then time constraints, like if there were comments again that were like good, good comments and we're like, oh, wow, we really need to spend a lot of time like finding this or thinking about how to address it or, you know, I guess it kind of goes back into the same bullet of like not having specific language or data or suggestions. It was kind of like, well, I don't know if we're gonna be able to get, get to this. Um, but the vast majority of the feedback did get included. And so I, I did similar to how Susan went through um, when went through, I don't think I have every single section in here, because some of the sections, it was mostly wordsmithing edits. Um, but I wanted to kind of highlight the things that were um, more than a wordsmithing edit, things that were added in. Um, so the natural resources chapter, I did update the stormwater section, which speaks about the municipal roads general permit, which you guys don't need to know about if you don't already know about it. But I think that comment came from um, CCRPC and that is a permit that the town obligates the town to implementing road stormwater management, best management practices every year. And so updating at some language about the progress they've been making on that. Um, and the language is updated, updated relating to tertiary areas related to the NRO. Um, so I think the language that Susan pointed out wasn't completely accurate. And so we needed to make edits to that and added that um, future updates might consider adding tertiary uh, areas to the regulations, but they're not included in the current version of the NRL. And then I added a bullet to the action items uh, related to natural resource extraction, which was a comment from CCRPC and they basically said, you know, this is something that it was a required edit. We needed to speak to that particular, that specific resource. Um, and it was a comment that didn't get carried over from our old town plan to the new town plan. So it's just uh, something that needed to be transferred. In the land use section, I added some language and now acknowledging the impact of zoning and how it limited who could live here and still to some degree does limit who can live here. I added the possibility of adding a neighborhood development area designation as a means to achieve housing goals. And that can be a designation like a supplemental designation in addition to a village center that captures the area surrounding a village center. Um, and then I updated the language in the map in the section where it was referencing the commercial district. Cause I think the map, I was told that the map that had been in the previous version was from the first iteration of the Commercial District Master Plan, but it had been updated. So I needed to switch out the map and the language updated. Um, and then housing, that chapter kind of mirrors, the updates that I made were all pretty similar to what Susan covered in the volume one housing chapter. Um, in the economy chapter, I added participation in the Communication Union District as an action item, which we are already doing, but I felt warranted calling out. Um, I added a reference to the food hub in the forest ag and local food-based business section. Mobility chapter, there was a whole list of projects that were uh, called, I think it was called like on like pro- projects that were in progress or planned. And many of them had been done, which was great to see. Um, and so I removed the ones that were already done and kind of updated and added a few things in that we're working on currently so that be as up to date as it could be. In the public utilities chapter, I added language about the wastewater feasibility study and added wastewater needs summary maps. And those maps came from our consultant that's working on the wastewater feasibility study. Um, and then I had to do some data updates for the energy uh, elements that came from CCRPC. They provided a bunch of data that was more updated than what we had in the previous version. So it's kind of just replacing that data and updating that. Um, in the mobility chapter, similar to um, what was the other chapter that had the commercial district language and map? It had the old map from the previous version of the commercial district and some old language that needed to be updated. So I fixed that. Um, and then again, there were lists of bike pad projects that needed to be updated. Um, so I fixed that. In the facilities and services section, I added Spanish immersion program as a call out in the education section, because that's new since the last version of the plan. Um, and then there's a section that um, lists all the town committees and I added the food hub task force and the diversity, equity and inclusion committee to that section. And then the statutory section, this was an edit required by CCRPC. Um, I needed to add language clarifying how the future land use map is compatible with the regional plan and specific to the area around MMU at the high school. Um, cause in the CCRPC regional plan, which is based on current town zoning, it identifies the area around the high school as uh, rural. And so they're like, well, if you're gonna potentially increase the density there, have lower lot sizes, that might not be, meet our definition of rural. So I just needed to add some language to talk about similar to to what Susan said earlier about like why we think, why we need to do this and how it's not gonna undermine the goals of the CCRPC regional plan. Um, and then I did update some of the maps, not every single one. Um, and I had to work with CCRPC because I don't have the GIS software. And we decided that the approach, the approach we would use is uh, best practices, which is using publicly available data versus trying to like turn on and off parcels based on our own knowledge of something. Um, and I want to just add the disclaimer that because of that, the maps are only as good as the data sources that are publicly available. So uh, some of them, you know, might not be a hundred percent accurate as basically all planning maps are. So that's sort of the caveat with the maps, like we did the best we could with the data that was publicly available. Um, and CCRPC staff updated the energy-related maps with data um, that was newly required for state statutes. So they handled all of that. And then on map nine, I changed the title to tiered conservation areas because it had been titled the Natural Resources Overlay. But it's not actually the Natural Resources Overlay. It's to be to help provide some context and input on um, changing that name and and why, but it would, in in that it's okay that it doesn't line up to be the Natural Resources Overlay, but it's a map that will inform updates to the Natural Resources Overlay. So those are kind of the high level edits that I went through on volume two. Does anyone have questions about that or discussion?
Suppressive.
Thank you. That it seems like it was a huge amount of work.
It was a blast. David, is there anything you did in volume two that you wanna add so you can remember?
No, you you covered most of them. I was, I was trying to see if I could figure out how many edits there were, but it didn't generate a total list of all the edits.
Yeah.
Um, but it was probably more in the thousands. Can you
Sure.
Consider both uh, volume one, volume two.
Yeah, that's probably true. So we'll talk a little bit about what what's next um, before the select board hearing. Uh, as Susan mentioned, we we are aware that there are some still some typos, um, grammar errors. And I like the term orphan edits that you pointed out. Um, and that there probably are some correct, other corrections that are remaining. And I'm glad David's here because he can help us understand what's possible to edit before the plan handoff of the plan. If this, if the planning commission approves it to be forwarded to the select board tonight, it would go to them on Thursday. Um, so, but it makes sense to talk about that, what we can do before Thursday first. And then we can talk about uh, what we can do after Thursday after that.
So Liz, what is?
Can you, would you mind just coming to the microphone? Thank you.
One of the things that Liz is still working on is to add the captions um, under the images in volume one of volume two, that's already been done, as well as labeling all the graphs and figures, tables and figures. Um, so I'm just, I have been compiling a list of, you know, here's, here are typos or here are you know, line breaks that, you know, or shouldn't be there, things like that, that I'm gonna get to her first thing in the morning. Um, to try to incorporate to have a, have that, all that cleaned up before it goes to the select board. So I'm capturing a few things that I can here to to include in that. Um, but my, we don't really have any time for any real back and forth kind of process, because I'm gonna if I can capture all these things now, I'm gonna send this to Liz tonight. So she has it first thing in the morning to be able to turn it around.
Well, i- if we agree about the Act two fifty you mentioned, I would be interested in having this flatboard see that.
Yeah, I agree. That, that's um.
So there is something in there that in here that it, that talks about.
There is, but I feel like having it in the space at the beginning, talking about constraints is is really important. We just look at the last five years of developments and subdivisions that are nine and less.
It feels uniquely relevant to this town and this moment of housing need. I mean, not, not unique in the state of Vermont, but it is particularly relevant.
Are you thinking in the introduction?
In the introduction, talking about housing, there's key challenges around housing.
Key challenges. How does it involve climate change?
I don't know if it goes just in housing. I think it's an overall constraint to the growth of the entire town.
It shows up in vibrant community page twenty seven. That's um, talking about the village centers designation, village centers by the state provides important benefits, access to grants, and in some cases relief from state permitting requirements like Act two fifty. That's the only place I, when I did a, a find, that's the only, that's the only place I found it.
In volume one or in the whole thing?
And and all of volume one.
Volume one.
Pages, yeah.
I mean, I was thinking specifically of housing, but it probably is relevant to broader development. But I, I think I would like to see it mentioned as a s- specific real limiting factor. We have observed limit development in our town already. And will continue to limit development in a way that is in directly impacting housing in particular.
Yeah.
We should just be like, just head right at it. It's my feeling, but.
Yeah, I agree. I think, yeah, I agree. It could go in the section of key challenges, housing and climate change.
Right, so so then there's a subheading is around housing.
Right. And then here in this colored box where it says housing production is not keeping up with demand, you're missing a with. A lack of diversity of housing types does not support existing families, let alone attract new ones. Housing is far too expensive for most households. Local development is hampered by Act two fifty, we, you know.
I almost wonder about something like Act two fifty skews.
Act two fifty doesn't allow developers to develop dense housing, which all of our zoning regulations are trying to incentivize.
In that box, is that?
Yeah.
I mean, that would be an easy place to add it. And then it would call a lot of attention to it. Yeah. Act two fifty skews. Skews development applic- or skews development applications to be limited to nine.
Nine or fewer. Or or
To avoid Act two fifty.
It doesn't even skew it, flat out limits it.
Yeah.
It, it completely.
There's never, there's not a development in town. That's more than that because of Act two fifty.
It creates inequity because of the added cost.
And it's, and it's, we're literally missing housing that we would otherwise have.
Yeah.
So I would, you could, I mean, without giving it even more, just I'm looking at space, I'm looking at where we are.
Right.
Call out Act two fifty as a significant limiting factor to create the kind of housing and development we want.
Period, end of story.
Right.
Everybody knows what that means, right?
You know, you don't have to get into the details. If it were in that call out box, which is very bright, prominent, catches your attention.
I like your wording too, significant limiting factor.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Just, just right there.
Yeah. Did you get, David, that um, housing production is not keeping up with demand in that box? Okay. Yeah. Isn't it funny how you don't see something until you read it out loud because your brain filled in the blank, right?
Well, especially for me, because I'm like, I'm so deep into this that it's blah, 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 blah.
And also all of us, like our brains just fill in the blank. They don't, yeah.
Yeah. Um.
All right, so that, so we discussed Act two fifty. Heidi suggested that the are you ready to move on, David, to the next one? Are you still working on that one?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, can I, oh, can I just make one little more in then than Susan? I'm sorry, I'm in the, I'm now. Okay, can I, oh, can I just make one little more amendment, Susan? I'm sorry, I'm in the, I'm now.
Same box?
The, the what is right next to the box in the left-hand column is that it says Jericho has not invested in the kinds of infrastructure. Jericho's regulations and policies are complex and restrictive. This is really the place to say Jericho's ability is limited by act two fifty. Because what it's basically putting all the onus on us, while really we are operating within these constraints.
Right.
So just add both Jericho and state regulations.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think if you, if you did that and that, you see that.
State regulations, especially act two fifty.
Yeah, I think, and then also have that, and then in the call out box, I think that really.
That's bookends it.
Yeah.
It's in the text and it's in the box.
So wherever you read, you're gonna run into it.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
No, that's good, because I'm back to you, Heidi.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so Heidi suggested a little preamble to the getting it done list that explains that the primary lead that we expect collaboration, the primary lead is not the decision maker, the primary lead is just at this moment in time the responsible party for the next immediate step or something to that effect.
So here's what it says, and I, as you were talking about it, I wrote to add in here. Um, so the third line begins with where to start and who we should be looking to, to take a leadership role, to move the action forward, period. In most cases, the ultimate responsibility to take a final action lies with the select board. And there will be many other community uh partners uh needed as part of the conversation, or something like that.
I think that, yeah, David, I like where you're going with it, and I, I think I would say that, um require select board, would you say the select board side again?
And in, in most cases, the ultimate responsibility to take a final action lies with the select board.
Um, responsibility, authority. Or both.
It's kind of both.
Right?
Just, authority is a little more precise.
Right?
But responsibility is good because it holds them accountable.
So ultimately, the, maybe it says in those cases, ultimately, the select board must take responsibility and action.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, it's responsibility to take a final action.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but, yeah, hold the responsibility of taking it.
And, and.
Making a decision and taking action.
Right?
Hmm, yes.
Or making decisions and taking actions.
Yeah, we want.
Because we're talking about lots of actions below.
And then I apologize because of, um, I am not seeing in the actions here, David, I'm sure you know exactly where it is. Um, the bringing to a vote to expand capacity of the expand the, the select one.
Oh, it's in the three years.
It's in the three.
Up to three years.
That in the up to three years, not in.
Maybe the next category.
Next one, yeah. Great, I knew that you would know exactly where it was.
Yep, medium.
Okay.
It's the top of page sixty-two.
Okay, and then the last one we heard tonight was Wendy's comments about mobility.
And I got those, I was able to find them, yeah.
You were, okay, so.
And just to clarify, isn't that when you started out and you said edits will be coming about that rural character paragraph, that will be included to the select one?
Well, I guess that would be back to you, David, so um the DEI committee provided the exact text that they would like to see included that talks about the term rural character and how it's in the plan and has connotations. But we had to keep it in the plan because it's in state statute.
Is that in the comments that were submitted, or is that something?
It was in email uh recent, so not in the spreadsheets, but it was an email a cou- a couple of days ago, I thought.
Couple of days ago, and then we finalized, we had our meeting last night, so we finalized the language. So I sent, sent it to.
Copy it on that, or did it just come to Susan?
It might have just come to you and Susan.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't gotten anything in the last eight or two about that.
Um, I do have it accessible, yeah. And I can forward David the text so that um he can just copy and paste it. So this is on behalf of the Jericho DEI committee that Wendy provided to Linda and I today. I apologize, I guess I assumed that you were on the email. Um, they are requesting the text be included as part of the draft that's sent to the select board. And they would like this text included in the intro chapter, preferably in a call out box. And that might make it easier. And the text is as follows, and I, you don't have to type this because I'll send it to you.
Perfect.
In Vermont planning documents and throughout the US, it's common to see language that refers, actually, would you like to read this since this is your language?
It's common to see language that refers to a place's character with descriptors, descriptors like rural, small town and neighborhood. In fact, you'll see this language used throughout this plan. We recognize that this language has been historically used in zoning regulations throughout the United States to exclude people and maintain structural racism and inequalities. However, in order to be aligned with the state and regional statutes and goals, we have, we have had to continue using the term rural character in this town plan. Therefore, when revising and writing zoning to be in alignment with the twenty twenty-four town plan, we will avoid vague language that has been used to exclude, and we will strive to be consistent with Jericho's declaration of inclusion.
Great. Yeah.
Okay.
As a text box on, box on page seven.
Cool, thank you.
Well done.
So I met with the Arrow consultant today and we kind of went through some, you know, cleaning up the cleanups kind of thing. Is that the, is that something that you want before it goes to the select board, or is that broad enough that we can do it after and go into the select board like last week sometime? Um, how much?
Yeah, what are we talking, what kind of stuff are we talking about?
Well, some of it is still mapped, um, like the future land use map, the main map, legend for color theme um, doesn't match with the maps we did. Specifically the natural resources, so we talked about it, it, the color is fit. Like it, the, the, the color is correct and represents forested area in your natural resources map. But it doesn't, it's not reflected in the name, in the, in the overview. It still has the ag colors where there's forested like. So the maps that are associated with each paragraph that describe the future land use are correct, but the big picture map is still not jiving.
Got it, yeah, I see, actually, I see exactly what you mean, the forest, the.
The lower left-hand, right, it's, it's correct. And it's corrected in one spot, but not two.
Yeah, well, I need to fix that legend anyway, so.
The one of the maps also that had the dotted area doesn't have that dotted area in the legend, the one that's like a half a mile, you found that one, okay, yeah. And the agr- agriculture conservation map is titled the agriculture conservation and natural resource map. The title of the map doesn't match the title of the land use, oh, that, I'm talking about future land use now. The title of the map doesn't match the title of the section, okay?
Got it.
Um, and so, so that was one thing, um, there's still, there's still some disconnect between, uh, map nine is now, I think, correct?
Yeah, pure conservation priorities.
Conservation priorities and like that, we thought that was right on the mark, but the chapter, the text still isn't quite aligned with it. Um, and there's, um, there's a break in the table that lists the concert, the tiered priorities in the text.
Yeah.
It, it, it needs to stay tertiary in there, it doesn't.
It's, it's, it follows in a separate paragraph.
No, 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 in the table.
In the table.
You have a.
Oh, in the, in the table of the, of the.
You have the.
Yeah.
And I'm calling it a table, right? The, there are tertiary, um items in the secondary column.
Ah.
The, the, the heading is missing.
Okay.
So you're in the natural resources.
You're in.
You're talking about volume two.
Volume two.
And then volume two. This table, one of these tables?
Yes.
Okay, so, can you circle on here, just mark it up, and right here. Oh, boy.
It needs over.
I have another pen.
No, it's, so right here, how to name tertiary. So it's here. And Aaron's recommendation two is that the continuous habitat units is of an older term and doesn't apply anymore. So he thought we should change that to the fourth block. Okay, write that. No, no, we give this. I have more notes, I didn't, I didn't even do this. Oh, well, there's a lot more than you might not.
Then we can't.
Well, not, yeah, but okay, that, that's more important, but everything this, there was some stuff as well, but um, then why? Right, this is. Why isn't that there? Well, I, well. We have, we have tertiary. We have tertiary conservation areas. See, he, he thinks that this was included in the initial prioritization but not ultimately adopted as part of the NRO. He thought that was shooting our, he thought that was, you know, making a bad case against our own selves, so he thought that was unnecessary.
Well, the NRO was adopted with certain things.
Right, so the tertiary conservation areas were identified regardless of whether or not they were adopted.
Right, right. Well, that, that's where it, that's why I took it out and added the paragraph at the end of the table about a third category was included, the initial prioritization would not ultimately adopted.
Right, but if we're, if we're back to saying that map nine is not the NRO map.
Correct.
Then we can just say the tiered conservation priorities as shown on that, um, map nine are such.
Right, because a new NRO might look at the data with fresh eyes.
Correct.
And fresh politics.
So are you saying move this paragraph?
That should be the third.
You got that, David, move it.
Third, page sixteen.
Say that again.
The paragraph on page sixteen about tertiary conservation areas.
Yeah.
Cut that and paste it on page fourteen underneath the paragraph about secondary conservation areas.
As a bullet?
Mm-hmm, yeah, as a third bullet.
As a third bullet?
Yeah.
Okay.
And somewhere, I'm not sure where, but tertiary is spelled. I know where it is, as I. CCRBC edit, so I.
Which is, which is ironic, because probably on the map, there's no spell check.
Right.
Right.
On the rest of the document, it would be red.
Right, as well, did you, is it somewhere else, is it not that?
That is, that isn't.
That's why I didn't want that, yeah, all right. Let me give this to David too, to correct, this is the table on page sixteen separating those last two rows.
Got it, yeah, good to know, yeah.
Well, so. And then if you have.
I have more stuff, but I feel like I don't want to pick up the show times.
Do you have it marked up? Do you have that chapter marked up?
I'll, hold on.
If you can send it to me.
Before Heidi goes.
Yeah, if you can send it to me first thing tomorrow, because that's, that's a part that I have complete control, or I have to send it off to somebody else, I can just make those changes and, and update that, that chapter.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, could you imagine if we did the whole document like this? We'd be like killing ourselves.
Stop my own eyes out.
Okay, Heidi has one more comment, but before we do that, we were thinking, maybe could we have some cookies while we're finishing up?
Right here. To pass the birthday cookies.
Birthday girl.
You can just pass them right over, so.
Yeah.
Many thanks to Sabina.
I completely support this motion.
Yeah. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't even need to vote on it, it was a consent, what's that, a consent agenda?
Um, I take full responsibility.
My god, I can smell them from here.
This is what I chose, I do not like cake.
Hmm, we heard, we remember that, thank you very much.
She said, do you want me to make you a cake? I said, thank you so much, no, but you can make it for everyone else because I'm sure they'll enjoy it.
Thank you.
Oh, wow.
Okay, Heidi, volume one is a lot harder though, because we don't control it, but go ahead.
So, volume one. It's an organizing scheme that you're just, your head's gonna blow a day, then, so I'm gonna wait until you're ready.
Okay.
They're cooking, they're ready to hear it.
Happy now, we have chocolate.
Okay, so I am reflecting on one of the pieces of the order in the introduction. And the amazing work that went into naming, like what are our core challenges? And why, what we're doing in this plan and how it's so different? And how like the old plan impeded us, and therefore it's different. I know it's gonna be an organizational like hair puller, so let me just acknowledge that. But my suggestion would be to just slightly change the order of the section that is now the introduction. So if you can imagine, and you have it in front of you, it says right now, what is a town plan and why? Right? And then it goes into the organization of the plan and how to use it. What I would recommend is, because then it goes there and then has how it's organized, and then it comes back to key challenges, housing and climate change. And buried within there that doesn't have its own header is all the great work that you all did that now lies on page six that says this town plan sets forth the goals, policies and investments which strive to address these challenges in the future course. I think that is the preamble to how to use the guide. You want to say, what is a town plan? Then we say, these are the key challenges that are happening in Jericho. How we have to created this plan to address them. Therefore, here's how to use the plan and how it's organized.
So your basic suggestion is take the, here's how to use it, here's how to organize it from the middle and put it at the end of that section.
Where does, where does the vision go?
Oh, she's still in chapter one.
I'm still in chapter one, so it's due to be organized in the intro.
Okay.
And that we're on page six of the intro currently, David.
Yeah.
So you're talking about everything that follows this town plan sets forth the goals? Everything, the rest of that chapter moves?
Yeah, but I think it's easier if you move it the other, I think it's easier if you move how the plan is organized to the end, rather than all that other stuff forward. I think that'll be an easier edit.
So it's a cut and paste?
It's basically a cut and paste and with the additional one little subheader.
So the organization of the plan part on page two, all of page three, as a group, that stuff moves to the end.
Exactly.
Of the intro.
Of the intro, yeah.
Yeah.
That, that, yes, exactly, David. And then the only small amendment I would make to that is that I'm putting a little bit of a, just a mini header.
Yeah, I thought that too, I couldn't come up with.
A mini header on page, what is currently page six.
Mm-hmm.
Left column says this town plan sets forth.
Yeah.
It's basically, it needs a mini header there in bold that says how we plan to address these challenges head on. Or, um, addressing the challenges from the past and the future. Or dr- something, something that it's, because that's what you're doing, you're saying.
Moving Jericho forward.
It, it is, it's the, but it, because you're outlining, it's tying the previous challenges with the self-imposed challenges.
Right, although it's sort of specifically doesn't say exactly what we're gonna do, other than it says we're gonna be more proactive. It's that whole spiel. Um.
Why this is different?
Yeah, why this is different.
It's the why that it's different.
Yeah, how is this plan different moving Jer-, maybe it's just, how is this plan different dash moving Jericho? Yeah, how is this plan different moving Jer- maybe it's just, how is this plan different dash moving Jericho forward? And that's the subheading, so that you, you're setting up like, oh. This, wh- what's different? This is what's different.
So how is this plan different moving Jericho forward?
How is this plan different? Hyphen. Moving Jericho forward. It's a little, you know, it's not exact, it's more of a cue. A reader's, a cue to the reader. And it would also work if it's properly indexed in an online document that you could get, you could. Fast forward to different sections.
Or it could be changing our course.
Yeah, changing our course, moving Jericho forward.
I like that better.
I'm looking at the, the work that Susan's doing, wearing that, we're, we're gonna thank.
For here. For buildings.
Yep. Okay, and I'm gonna say, I think we should quit while we're ahead. And go, and go back, cuz I have a feeling like. We could, we could do this forever, so let's go back. To what's gonna happen now. So David, you've indulged us. Far more than I ever dreamed you would this evening. Um, I do think those are sort of the die on the sword edits to make us ready. To forward it, knowing that still not perfect, there's some cleaning up to do. So, back to you, Linda.
Back to me. So. Everything that you shared with David now is going into the draft before it gets delivered to the select board on Thursday.
Eighteen.
If you guys approve it.
And does it get delivered during their meeting?
Yes, it will get delivered during the meeting and is on the agenda. And I am planning to deliver it to them, and I would welcome the accompaniment of the planning commissioners.
Is, is a physical copy, a hard copy?
It is going to be.
What time?
Well, the meeting starts at six thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be very.
I, I would love to be there, but I can't be there on Thursday.
Like you shoot the arrow and then it lights up.
Get the clarity.
Do they each get a copy?
Yes.
Yeah, that's cool. Uh-huh.
You know. Double sided.
It's only three copies.
It's double sided.
Yeah.
Um, however, we'll also give them the link in an email. This meeting now has it online, so they'll be able to access it digitally, but I really liked. The visual of, um, physical handoff.
Are you gonna like send it to Staples and get it bound?
I'm not, you couldn't, no, I was gonna wait till it was.
Yeah, good point.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Before we went there.
Yeah, good point.
Um, are you sure to start at six thirty? No, it's like whenever they get to it on the agenda.
It's, I think towards the beginning of the agenda, but I do think it's after public comment. Which, um.
Okay.
I don't think they keep the public comment as tight as we generally do in our meetings, it could be. They divide, it could be, it could be longer.
Okay.
Um.
But you can be on Zoom also.
You can also be on Zoom, so is there anyone who would like to attend?
I, I want to, it just depends what time software is.
Yeah, I'm looking at, I have a commitment also, which is why I was, I had one in seven, that's why I was asking.
Okay.
Um, but maybe I'll do the Zoom until the seven, with the hope that they get to by then.
You can do the little clapping hand emoji.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking, you know, sort of with. That it's delivered with a, here it is, and we are happy to have many, many discussions with you.
And to go through, as Chuck said, line by line.
Right, I'm just thinking about like how we deliver it with that message of, of invitation or offer. And is it best if Linda says that or that one of us says that?
I think it's okay if Linda says that, maybe we could discuss that also at our next meeting, if we have some specific ideas around that. Let, do we wanna have an open house here on a Saturday where anybody could come? Would we want to break up into a subgroup to meet with the select board one at a time? Because they can't meet more than one at a time, otherwise it's a quorum. Uh, we haven't thought about that at all. What we did think about though is. Um, a presentation of the plan in a little bit more detail at one of their meetings. But that's not a line by line. I already, basically already did that three weeks ago. And Linda's gonna do it again with a little bit more detail the next time. Um, but we could think about if we want to offer something more robust than just that.
Specific to the select board.
Mm-hmm.
You, you as a commission being available to help. Answer their questions, walk them through the document, all of that, cuz just to keep in mind though that. This is, this will now be their document, so you having an open house to collect public comment on, on this. It's kinda not your party anymore, it's theirs, but you having, you know, scheduling time to meet with them individually. To do that, that, but I, I always suggest that it might be better to. Have an official warned meeting, all on the select board together.
We, we are gonna have that.
To go through it and say, this is. So what would the other one thing be for then?
Um. In more detail, because there, I don't know how many hours of their meeting they would be willing to give in one meeting.
Well, maybe it'd have to be a special meeting.
Yeah. Right.
I just think it would be better if it was. I'd rather have them all together and sort of, like, this is real, this is, we're gonna.
Yeah.
You accountable, you can hold us accountable, we're gonna make.
I, I agree, but in terms of digesting the document, I think that the offer. To have, to say to them, each of you can choose a planning commission member who will sit with you. And answer all of your specific questions and clarify any points.
And I think we should table this discussion until our next meeting, and at our next meeting, we can decide. For right now, we're just delivering them the document.
Right.
Because I haven't thought about it at all, and it's not on our agenda to talk about either, so.
I think it's also important to listen to, to, uh, watch how they respond to receiving it. They may request, they may have a request of the planning commission that they already have in mind.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that could be useful knowledge too, if, if they receive it and say, hey, could we meet one on one with you?
Right.
Whatever, so I think that would be important information to consider.
So at our next meeting, we'll talk about what else we might. How they respond, you can report to us how they respond, and we'll talk about ideas of what we wanna have happen next with them. We know that we have a placeholder on their meeting on whatever it is, Linda, I forget, like October. Sixteenth or something to present the plan in more detail, which is.
November sixteenth.
That's the hearing.
That's the.
There's something in the interim.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, where they would have it, where it would be in a public meeting and it would be reviewed, is that gonna be sufficient? Is, do we want to offer them something different than that?
Hmm.
I can't make that meeting, I know, so maybe a special meeting would be better, so there's a lot of things to consider. So we'll talk about that at our next meeting.
So their public hearing will be the sixteenth, not the second?
Correct, cuz they're not gonna receive it until the, the, it has to be thirty days.
Thirty days, that's right.
After they receive it, that they hold the hearing.
Yeah.
But between, so between now and November sixteenth, we can continue to accumulate. Edits and suggestions and corrections. And now we, just like any other member of the public, can provide that to them prior to their hearing on the sixteenth.
That, that assumes that there's time and budget and David's budget, time and money and David's budget to. Absorb those.
Yeah, he has one more draft in his deliverables.
Okay.
That will be the select board's iterations.
Okay.
So, are we as a commission gathering those edits? I mean, if they're just like. A sentences repeated twice kinda thing, like we gather all those and then.
Forward. If, if you have comments like that.
Mm-hmm.
I would like you to capture them using the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Flags, the same spreadsheet that we have been collecting comments on, but a blank one, so I don't get some.
Yep.
Yeah.
Long and dated, yep.
And send them to me, and I will start collecting all of those.
Okay.
And what I'm thinking about doing is sort of like. Categorizing them for the select board in terms of like, this is just a typo, this is just a. This or that, so that when I hand it off to them, they can just say, well, the typos, yeah, definitely like do all of those, and then if there's other items. That are more robust than those minor things, they might wanna have a conversation. But still have to really thought through what the different categories of edits are, maybe I won't know until I receive them.
Mm-hmm.
But that's what I would recommend all commissioners continue to do, and the public. Um. Keep collecting edits. And we'll get it as perfect as we can.
Mm-hmm.
Is this spreadsheet in our shared guide?
That's a good question.
Okay, I wonder, cuz I love how you put everything into our place so we can access it. I didn't, I didn't stumble upon it. I didn't search, but I didn't stumble upon it either when I was looking.
I thought that I had put it there, but now, now you're.
I think it was an email attachment, cuz it's itself, yeah.
But always have it there, so as things come up, we can contribute to.
So that would be a shared spreadsheet. The way it's currently working is everybody has their own spreadsheet that they work on. I guess that would be your choice. Would you want us to contribute to a single shared spreadsheet, or would you rather have everybody still work on their own?
I would rather have everyone still work on their own, only because of open meeting laws. If we're all editing and contributing to a document, or more than a quorum of. Planning commissioners are editing a document, um, then we shouldn't be doing that.
So maybe just a blank template in the shared folder, download it to your own drive, rename it Heidi's spreadsheet, and then.
That's fine.
Send it to Linda.
Oh, I was thinking, it would just make it one less step for you to possibly have get.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay, I will abide.
But you are welcome to do it in pairs, if you guys wanna like.
Okay.
Okay. Then give me one spreadsheet that has comments from two people.
Okay.
Okay.
So think about it, that would.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, what else on this list?
Well, I just wanted to say out loud some reminders for everybody and some words of encouragement, so I included them here at the bottom of the list. And I wanted to just remind everyone that we know the plan isn't perfect, and that's okay, nothing is ever perfect. And in this case, that Dawn is better than perfect, because Dawn gets us closer to where we wanna be with all of our goals. I wanted to highlight and celebrate that volume one is twenty pages shorter.
Hooray.
In version three than it was in version two.
Wow.
So that feels like a pretty significant accomplishment in, in streamlining things. I wanted to highlight that the current version, I already know meets the state regional planning requirements. Cuz I, I, we incorporated all of the feedback from CCRPC, so that's exciting about this version. Um, and then we already talked about this one, but just a reminder, we can continue to review and suggest edits for the select board. So this is not the end of the road for us interacting with the plan. And then the last thing is that at some point, we're probably almost certainly gonna be updating this plan before it expires in eight years. So if there are things in a year or two, or in a week, or a month that we're like, oh. We should change this, we can start a list of like. The cardinal of things, um, and just know that like, it's likely that we are gonna need to update at some point. Is that helpful?
Mm-hmm.
Great, you guys have done a lot of hard work.
Mm-hmm, lots of really good work. Okay.
Let's have a cookie.
Let's have another cookie. Definitely.
Rewards all around.
Okay. It's like Pavlov's dogs, do a plan, get a cookie. Approve a plan, get another cookie. Okay, so do we have any public comment related to? The discussion that we just had on finalizing version three? S J, you're with us. Do you wanna raise your, do you wanna make any comments?
I just wanna say thank you, and I, it is, uh, humbling and. I, I can't believe just a couple of years ago, I'd been living in this town for, I don't know, at that point, maybe seven or eight years. And just had no idea the amount of work that, that, uh, volunteers like you all put into this. You, I just, you guys are doing great, and I'm so thankful to have all of you. That's all.
Well, thank you, yeah, really, S J, thanks for your.
Oh, wait, and Sarah, I'm, can I just take one second? This is your birthday song, it isn't very long.
Thank you. If we have cookies.
Yeah, sorry.
Here, we can save you some.
I know, it was the middle school open house, otherwise I would have.
Yeah.
Open house, that did not happen for my family tonight.
Yeah.
Been before, we'll go again, and that was too much.
Okay, are we ready to move on to entertain a motion? And our motion is to submit the town plan draft version three. As edited this evening to the select board. And file a copy with the town clerk for public review.
It's a mouthful, but I will make said motion.
So moved, Heidi. I gotta put this down, okay?
I would like to second that motion.
And Sarah. Um, any? Further discussion? All those in favor of approving the plan sent to the select board, file a copy with the town clerk, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we know from an email from Eric, if he had been here this evening, he would have voted aye to approve the plan. Any, any, uh, any nays? Abstentions? The draft is approved to forward to the select board. Thank you, everybody. Great, great job. Okay. Steamrolling to the end. Linda.
Uh, I don't have a whole lot of things to report, cuz I've just been looking through the town plan.
Mm-hmm.
But I did want to share that just today, I did receive a report from the engineers who've been working on the. Uh, multimodal path, um, project, so the Jericho corners to Riverside path, and I haven't looked at it yet, but I got it, and that felt good.
Dan text in your inbox.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
That was all.
Linda, quite an indoctrination for you into your new job.
Oh, my goodness.
Should be doing this plan, like. It's like a graduate education in Jericho town planning in a short amount of time. Which is a ton, ton of work, but I just feel like sets you up. And sets us up so well to be so accelerated now and so indoctrinated into the plan.
Yeah, and also for you to feel ownership, like you're not inheriting someone else's plan.
Mm-hmm.
And for you to have a document that you can constantly reference when you're being asked to do six hundred things. So that you can say, hold on, what is the most important thing? Because that's really hard, and then you can also hold it up to everyone else. I love you, I'm so glad you brought that to me. Here's what I'm gonna be doing. Right, it's like, I'm not ignoring you, I'm not saying what you're saying isn't important, but these are my marching orders.
But then, and hopefully, I mean, I, I really feel, like, I just wanna give kudos to you, Linda and Susan. And ensuring that we're developing a really positive relationship together, cuz I think the work that. You, what you have been able to do just sets us also in really good trusting, understanding. Um, strong ways of communicating that sets us forth in a really positive way. So I just wanna give you both kudos for walking into it this way.
And really, everybody helped. I mean, everybody's, everybody's imprint is there, you know? Wendy and I and Sabina and I, we sat here editing, editing, editing. Got, you know, everybody did their spreadsheets and. David put up with a lot of grief and grumpiness and.
And no, this isn't what we asked for.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, David.
Yeah. So I, I feel really very victorious.
Tell everyone about the video, the thing that, that we learned about the, the video.
Oh, go ahead, Sabina, that's good news.
Our, um, community event that we did in May is the number two, has the number, the second. Most number of hits on the MMC TV.
Oh, wow.
Channel.
Really?
Yeah.
We're influencers.
Right, we're influencers.
Sabina and.
Sabina and her son. Were instrumental in doing, so we have like the videographer, right?
And it's like a, it's like a, a highlights reel, it's like twelve minutes long or something. So Linda and I were talking today about maybe using some snippets of that. In the presentation on, either on Thursday or maybe the following couple of weeks. Just to really drive home the point that we had. A lot of public engagement. We had a lot of comments. Yeah, that was really good. And. Our meeting, was it our public hearing? Oh no, it was our kickoff meeting?
It was February eight.
Yeah, so it was the kickoff meeting for the planning commission was like number seven. In the, in the list too. Yeah, so maybe we should get like our hair and makeup done. For like our videos, yes. Yeah, we should have, yeah, exactly. Well, but now, once people know more.
Tuning in.
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna like build our, build our base. Okay, Linda, anything else? Okay, uh, number ten, does anybody, any of the planning commission have reports on their? Liaison roles or any events or any updates?
My update is that I've graduated from the walking college.
Oh, congratulations.
So I'm turning in my project and then. As I said, it was a very good program, I'm glad I did. I'm glad I did it, I learned a lot.
So will you be wanting to come to us with sort of like your highlights reel of what you learned in the walking college that we should all know? Or do you think it'll be more sprinkled throughout your work? As you go?
I'm thinking it would be more sprinkled, but. I mean, and honestly, a lot of the stuff that I've been working on, we're doing in the plan, you know, so it's not like a big surprise. But, um. Yeah, I know, I'm just, I'm pleased and it, it definitely aligns with. With what we're doing. My mentor is a former planner in Jericho, and so she. Feels like.
Um, my only update is that SJ and I are going tomorrow to meet with the Richmond Planning Commission. Because they want to hear more about our. Um, Affordable Housing Committee and our housing resolution and how that came to be and other. Activities that we've had here. So we'll be doing that tomorrow. Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sure.
I'm wondering, Wendy, I, I think I missed it. Did you ever hear back about the art proposal?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, we weren't invited to continue.
Okay, I would love to. Continue to find, find ways to move that forward.
Yeah, and we, we were, since we could reapply, right? When we did that, they said, well, well. We can't see it being. You know, a precursor to the town plan, but may come back. And, 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 you know, make it a follow up to the town plan. So I think that's the way they.
I just really, I'm just inspired by the leadership that you all took on that, um. As I've been going in other towns. You know, around the mountain, seeing the ways that other communities have used art, I think. You were on to something. And we shouldn't let it drop.
Okay, any other business? Nope. Okay, so our next meetings are October seventeenth and November seventh. So at October seventeenth, we'll talk about the select board receipt of the plan. And we'll also, we'll talk about how we wanna further engage with the select board. On the plan. Based on what we hear and based on ideas that we bring to that discussion. Potentially discuss how we're doing on edits to the plan. And. Maybe one of those two meetings go back to starting to do kind of some education on form-based code. That was where we were gonna start on Riverside. Did anybody have any else, anything else that they want us to start working into the agendas for the next two meetings? Linda.
I had a thought. If the planning commission is still interested in creating a summary document. Companion to the town plan, it could be an opportunity to. Talk about that and see if anyone wanted to volunteer to be on that.
That's a good idea.
I, yeah, do we do a press release ever?
We do. So the articles that are in the Mountain Gazette are submitted as a press release. In that format. Yeah, so. We could, uh, we might wanna do something closer to the hearing.
But it might be nice to tie the. Summary to that time.
Right? Yep. Because if the summary could be available in advance of the hearing. What, you know, a week or two ahead. Okay, and then eleven sixteen, we think is the hearing. And probably as many of us as can attend, that would be helpful. Do we need an executive session? No? Everybody ready to go? Motion to adjourn? Chris? And Sabina? All those in favor to adjourn? I'm glad I'm not Kevin McCarthy. Thank you, SJ, for coming. Thank you.